Agents 25 of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is saying one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, for the record, Kristen couldn't make it tonight. Amador's going to be a few minutes late. He was running late. For the record, Kristen couldn't make it tonight, and Amador's running late. At this time, we'll do the AOK Awards. Do we have any tonight? I'm thinking we do.
You are correct. Thank you, Mr. Halleck. So our first AOK Award tonight, who was here as president, is Emory Baumhard. Come on up, sweetie pie. I do have to admit, this is not her first AOK Award. She is the epitome of kindness at GRM. And this AOK Award, Emory, was because the day, if you remember, there was a student who really wanted a chocolate cupcake, and you had taken the last chocolate cupcake, and you gave that cupcake up and took another flavored cupcake, which is just amazing. Do you remember that day? So for that, Emory, we are giving you another AOK Award. All right?
She's so cute.
All right, it's warming up here, so the ice cream's gonna be great. All right, thank you guys so much.
Is that all we have for tonight? One? At this time, if you guys would like to stay and be bored with us, you're more than welcome to, or we wouldn't be insulted if you left. Can I go with yous? No. All right, at this time, I have the superintendent's report.
All right, the first thing I would like to update the board and the public with is the bond update. I met with the bond committee this morning, just to give you a couple of things. With the bond committee, we were talking about this morning, because I wanted to double-check with dates. We are going for SED approval on our plans in July. Now, what that means is bids will go out for the work November, December, as long as SED approves it in a timely manner, which they've been right now running about three months. So once we get the approval on the SED, on our plans from SED, then the bids will go out November, December. So then we're gonna be on track. And once the bids go out, we choose the lowest bidder, and those appointments should be running around February, January, February, as soon as we get the bids. So that means we are on track for construction to start summer, late spring, early summer 2025, no, 2024, excuse me. So I did want to give you that kind of update. The one thing, you know, we are still in winter, unfortunately, as snow looks like it's coming in tomorrow night into Saturday, and then early next week. I do want to talk about the Remote Instructional Day protocol. So this past February 28th, we had to go to remote instruction due to the inclement weather. If we are forced to close school again, we will have to utilize remote instruction. The students will follow a designated schedule that was established in both buildings. Junior, senior high school basically follows their regular schedule with minor modifications, like study halls don't meet, things of that nature. McKenzie's schedule is also, was developed to be developmentally appropriate based on the students' grade level. By going remote, we do not have to take away any days from spring break, which is in three weeks. Next year's calendar does have seven snow days built in, so we should not have to switch to remote instruction like we've had to this year. 2023-2024 budget, Caleb will be giving his presentation this evening. I am asking the board to go to the tax cap this year in order to cover the inflationary costs, as we've all been dealing with, that we've been hit with as far as fuel costs, health insurance has gone up, and, you know, by going to the tax cap, which we have not in five years, will help us make sure that we are solid in our financial approach and our fiscal responsibility. This will also, you know, our academic programs are fully funded, and our reserves will remain solvent, but I am asking the board to go to the cap. The 2023 summer school, that will be at McKenzie this summer. It will be operating for four weeks, and Mr. Carpenter can correct me if I'm wrong, July 10th through August 3rd. It will go from pre-K through sixth, 6th grade. High school students that need credit recovery for graduation purposes have the opportunity to take courses through Sullivan County BOCs. They run their summer school program at Liberty. Transportation for high school students will be provided if they have to go to summer school. And then coming up next week, Wednesday on March 15th, Mr. Carpenter and I will be attending a job fair at SUNY New Paltz. This is for teachers, and it's, you know, the purpose is to get the earliest view of possible candidates and to showcase our amazing opportunities in this district of why people should want to come work here and live here. So I look forward to that. It'll be my first job fair with Eldred, and I'm just, I'm excited for that. But that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ferrera. Any questions from the board?
Yes. The remote instruction days, are those, I know that SED allowed us to do those. Was that SED mandated, or we decided to do that so that we didn't take any time away from spring break?
It is allowed by SED. It's not mandated. It is under a pilot program.
I believe John thought that that was going to become a state thing, so he was gonna jump on that first.
That was my understanding. They still haven't mandated yet. It is a possibility for the future.
Yeah. Any other questions for Ms. Ferrera? All good? Thank you. Elementary principal report. Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Halleck. So our attendance continues to rise over the last two months. We saw an increase of 0.55% from last month, so our attendance is now currently sitting at 92.23%. Our goal is to have 95%. We are in an upward trend, and we may have a chance of reaching that by the end of June. We have four less students from the last time we met here as Board of Ed meeting. We have 237 students total, but four less from last time. We continue to implement really great reading to help us improve our literacy outcomes. Teachers are completing their mid-year assessments, giving data points for student growth. Dr. Miller has come and observed lessons using the fidelity checklist across all grade levels to make sure we are implementing the program with fidelity and consistency. As Mrs. Ferrera spoke earlier, summer school is going to be July 10th through August 3rd, pre-K through 6th grade. It'll be a half-day, and will also include special area teachers, lunch, and bus transportation. The state assessments are coming up. We have ELA in April, we have math in May, and we're also at GRM looking to initiate a targeted enrichment for students in 3rd through 6th grade from the time period of about the middle of March, about two weeks, through the end of May. We're looking to target those students who may be struggling still, even though we still had summer school the last two years. Observations continue to move forward. All non-tenure teachers' formal observations are complete, and I'll be getting my independent observations of the junior, senior high school this month. We completed our winter clubs last week. They were a huge hit. We had 15 clubs with close to 200 students of the 237 students enrolled in clubs. Our spring clubs will begin the week after spring break, and they'll go for six weeks, and will end right before Memorial Day weekend. Odyssey of the Mind team competed at OU BOCs on March 4th. They did a great job. We did far better than we did last year, and I expect next year to have a real great opportunity to actually place in the Odyssey of the Mind competition. I just want to say thank you to Sonya Mullen and Joanne Burrows Woods, who are big contributors to our Odyssey of the Mind team. I would be remiss to say, all county band and chorus occurred last Sunday. We had approximately, at GRM, we had almost 20 students participating. It was a great day. After reaching out to some of the parents, they were really impressed with some of the music and the choral pieces that were played that day. Student council supported our Super Bowl campaign. Our first backpacks went out to families who may have some food insecurities, and they went out last Friday, and will go out again this Friday. The student council is developing ideas for Field Day in June. It's always fun to have 11- and 12-year-olds decide what we think we want to do for Field Day in June. So Mr. Keith will take those ideas and come up with a theme, and that's how we'll execute Field Day in June. We have the John Lennon Project in music to occur in April. It's not really so much a field trip, but a program that's gonna occur in music for our 4th and 5th graders. And our 4th and 5th graders went to Bethel Woods for Story Pirates. I myself had never been to Bethel Woods before, and that room where we held Story Pirates in, or they held Story Pirates in, is just incredible. It's just an incredible place. I was really taken aback by all of it. And the last thing I'd like to report is that in the last issue of The River Reporter, the best of 2022-2023 teacher was Miranda Martell, who's a 3rd grade teacher here at GRM, and she's homegrown. She's an Eldred graduate and a teacher at GRM. She was the best of in the category of teacher for 2022-2023 in The River Reporter. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Any questions from the board? All good? Thank you. Mr. Conklin.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Halleck. So from the junior, senior high schools, just want to go over attendance real quick. For the month of February, our attendance was at 90.31%. All right, that is a little drop from last month. Okay. New York State 3-3 testing. Obviously, we're gonna be testing math in ELA in grades 7 and 8. I have picked the dates for that. Our English Language Arts exam will be on April 19th, 2023, and April 20th, 2023. And also for math, we are gonna do that during the window of, well, the two days we're gonna do it are May 2nd, 2023, and May 3rd, 2023. Pick these dates because it leaves us some time in the window, case of makeups or any technical snafus that we might run into. So those dates are picked. Scheduling. So the course selection guide has been established. That is, Ms. Garen's gonna be meeting with all students in their English classes next week. We have the courses that we want to run. The course guide is out there. Students will pick what they want to take next year, and the schedule will be built off of what our student interest is. We have a great number of courses that we're gonna offer, and then at our next meeting, where our scheduling consultant, Elliot Maronblum, we're going to start designing the grid for the master schedule for next year. I also put on my report that the National Honor Society blood drive took place on February 15th, and I thought it was important, because we collected 28 units pints at the drive. It's projected that each pint could save up to three lives. This is making it a very successful drive. There's only one other time in the past seven years we've collected more than 28 pints. Among the donors, we had eight staff and faculty and five students, some for the very first time. So I think that's really important, pretty amazing that, you know, we set a record there. So that's awesome. The junior, senior high school students attended the Sullivan County All Music Festival on Sunday. This event was condensed into one day because of the weather. However, Mr. Nivison reported back the following, and I'll read through this real fast. On Sunday, March 5th, we have 15 students from the junior, senior high school selected to participate in the Sullivan All County Music Festival in Liberty. They were spread out among four ensembles. I will not read each ensemble, but I'll just mention the names real quick. Jackson Counts, Haley Gashenauer, Tyler Mendes, Nathan Fine, Leana Mullen, Marissa Gashenauer, Claudia Wasaki, Madison Daw, Olivia Counts, and Tabitha Smith, Ksenia Sinowski, and Autumn Walsh. And then in mixed cores, we had Angie Curly, Natalie Edwards, and Kristin Amaroso. Among these, we had a number of instrumentalists who earned first-chair section leader spots, which is very great. And when talking to Mr. Nivison, he kind of put it into perspective, since we're a smaller school, we really kind of came out on top with, you know, our performers there. So number one, when he did, he had a whole percentage breakdown that he gave to me. But I do have the program. If anybody wants to check that out from the festival, I'll pass that around. Okay, so the wait is finally over. The PTSA first meeting is going to be on March 27th. I am going to be annoying a lot of people, a lot of staff members, to join the PTSA, because we do need a certain amount of members to really take off from there. It is a Zoom meeting, so I, you know, I hope a lot of people can attend and join, and all are invited. Really, really excited for this. March 27th at 7:00 PM, I believe we said. So that's exciting. Friday, March 3rd was the progress reports, and then I mentioned the festival. We have the superintendent's conference day coming up. On Wednesday, March 22nd, we will have March Music in Our Schools Month concert at 6:30 PM, right here, and then our PTSA meeting. And then Friday, March 31st, is the end of the third quarter at the junior, senior high school. All right? And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conklin. Any questions from the board members? Mr. Conklin? All good. Thank you. Destiny, you're up, kiddo.
So right now, the age tiers are signed because people are still in race for the Washington teacher. Spring sports have started pretty much hard, but I was supposed to be starting on Monday, so all students should be signed up on the family end. Student council is still looking to hold their annual promposal contest, I don't know if that's my name, promposal contest. So basically, students would make posters, and we have first prize winners for two free prom tickets paid by student council. Second place is one prom ticket paid by student council, and they're supposed to be $25. Non-yes forms have been released. They are going to be due Friday and March 21st. Student councils also trying to present their Hall Awards event. We can just wait. And as Mr. Conklin said, that question second was just a sponsor.
Thank you, Destiny. Any questions for Destiny? Don't we have five kids going to States tomorrow for surgery?
Yes.
Yep.
Thought so.
They leave at 7:30 in the morning.
They actually got moved up because of the snow, so they're hopefully be on five points.
Good. Very good. Okay, directional instruction. Mr. Krebs, you're up.
Good evening. Upcoming, I put on our list that we have our second half of our Leader in Me training coming up March 17th. That's next Friday. We're looking forward to that. We did our first training, which was three of the seven habits, and our next training will be the last four of the seven habits. Really great reading, like Mr. Carpenter said, is going strong at the elementary level. We found out this year that we needed to support the Really Great Reading Program some decodable books, and I kind of spoke about what a decodable book is, and we've gotten through our kindergarten and our first grade with buying them some decodables that they can use to support the Really Great Reading Program, and we have second grade left to go by the end of this year. Dr. Miller, she has been with us assisting with our, the Really Great Reading Fidelity checklist that she's been implementing. She also was here yesterday, Tuesday, and she did an after-school PD session on assisting the teachers with how they do progress monitoring, utilizing our STAR reports, and how that can best be used within the classroom. Our literacy coach, Linda Zachmerry, has also been providing PD slices, as she calls them, after school. She's done a number of them on mentor texts. She's been doing on how the 3th through 6th grade teachers can support the upcoming assessments within their classroom instruction, so it's not a separate prep and prepare for their assessments, but how they can incorporate that within their sections. And we have a Read 180 training that's taking place tomorrow morning for some 4th and 5th grade teachers. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Mr. Krebs. Any questions from the board? All good. Thank you. Mr. Russell, it's time to shine.
Okay, let's see.
Jump up there.
See, is this working? It's working. All right. There we go. All right. So, board members, you've already kind of seen a lot of this. I've just modified this to implement the changes that we had discussed. So when I gave it to you guys last week at the budget workshop, it showed a deficit, which is just the way you start a budget. So where we ended up is, we ended up at a budget of $19,509,716. That's actually up $500,000 from last year. Last year's was $19,600,000. I'll get to where the big increases are, but there were a number of big increases. Health insurance is one of the largest. It's almost 6%, and it's $2,400,000. So that's well over $100,000. And then workers' compensation went up $45,000. So we kind of got hit in a lot, mostly in the employee benefits section, but all around, prices are up. And I think, energy especially. I think everybody's feeling that at their home. So we are asking you to go to the cap this year, which would be with our pilots, would bring us up to $12,744. That raises an additional $400,000 in taxes. So that's almost all from taxes. State is not really kicking in any extra aid. We got the 3% bump, but then due to the, our wealth index increasing again, they reduced our BOCs and transportation aid, which completely offset the 3% bump in foundation aid. So we get nothing extra in aid. The tax cap this year is 3.7%. However, 0.98% of that is because of new buildings that were put onto the tax rolls this year. So this will be the first year on their tax rolls. This blunts this effect, so the net effect on households is 2.72%. Now, I want to make it clear that I can't tell you that that's what's gonna happen to your house individually, because there's an equalization rate, so you could end up having, you know, one town go up, one town go down. If your house gets reassessed, you know, I can't control that. But all things held equal, equalization rate the same, your assessment the same, that should be about what you see. And that works out to about $42.70 per $100,000, and I kind of listed that out, which I'll make available on the website for anybody who wants to go and see. And Tracy's got me working on some more illustrations for the April budget for when you guys go to approve it, so that taxpayers can see a little better than this, and kind of maybe do some charts and some pie chart type stuff, make it easier for them to see, this is what, this is what the effect is on your house. Just to point this out, this isn't to throw it in anybody's face or to say, hey, you've had it good. This is to say that we take it seriously when we go to the cap. We try not to. We haven't gone to the cap in any year since 18, 19, and that's because we do take it seriously when we go to the cap. So this is to show that we haven't, this is the money we've left on the table for the cap. And in the future, if we can, we would keep it under, but I think right now, as inflation is happening for the next few years, you're probably, you're probably looking at staying at the cap. Not going over. Foundation aid came in at $3,926. That's what they increased. Building aid, this is $20,000 less than last year. Transportation aid, this is less than last year. BOCs aid is $40,000 less than last year. Textbook aid kind of stayed the same. High-cost aid is higher, but high-cost aid, what that is, is the amount over, so the state sets an amount, an average cost for when you send a student to a private school, a student with disabilities. So if you have an IEP student that goes to, say, for the Center of Discovery, they say the statewide average for one of those institutions is $70,000. Your cost over $70,000, you get aid on. So this isn't like, this is money we get, but it's not made money. It's, I had to spend money to get aid on that. And then the other aid is, they give you $277,000 for being a small government, we're a small district, and there's a bunch of other smaller aids that kind of get thrown into that. The lottery aid is in there as well. Our aid ratios, just to give you an idea of where I was in '21-'22, my BOCs aid has gone down 11% since '21-'22. So if I was spending $3 million at BOCs, it's gone down quite, we were getting close to $700,000 at one point. We're down to like 370. Transportation aid, again, it's gone down a lot. This is where it peaked, kind of, well, here's where this one peaked. This one peaked here. And they're going down, and that's largely because of the compressor station, so giveth and taketh away. Once they put it on there, they say, hey, you've got a lot more real estate per pupil, and we're gonna give you less. Building aid's the same. They uniformed that. The BOCs refund, this is, BOCs aren't allowed to have fund balance, so they overcharge us at the beginning of the year to make sure that they have the money to pay their bills. At the end of the year, the leftover has to be refunded back to all the districts, and that's what this number is. I budgeted it at $450,000, which is actually pretty conservative, because we've been in the 500 range, 700 this year, but that was an outlier. But I think it's gonna be around 450, honestly. I think it's pretty close. This is, this is a tight budget. Interest, just, this was just for your own interest, if you want to look at it. This is how we're gonna earn interest next year. This is how our money comes in to zeros. I'm not going down to the dollar, but this is how school finance works, is we keep, this is our cash balance. You'll see that it, at September, it's down real low, and then it just balloons up. Stays pretty high until June. That's when we have our bond payments, $1 million, and we, so teachers, where they don't work the summer, so a lot of the teachers will take a big lump sum and take less money throughout the year. You gotta pay that out. That's a little over $1 million, like $1.8 million, and you pay it all out in one shot in June. So that's what happens there. But I think this is pretty conservative. We might be able to get close to $200,000 in interest next year, and I only budgeted $100,000. Some of it has to go into our capital projects. So the 1.57 million we put in our capital project fund, any interest earned on that, which is gonna be $40,000 or $50,000, has to go in that fund. So that's why I only did 100 in the general fund. But that can go towards our bond project. This is how it kind of breaks down and how it was last year. So you'll see our instruction and our general support are within $100,000. You'll see that's where a big increase was. Employee benefits is going up $224,000. Debt is actually only going up 20. This is going up 20. So this is 200, 100, both general support and instruction. And transportation is pretty flat. I'm not expecting that to really go up much, except that's, that's really more the contractual raises that go into the bus drivers and transportation manager. This is breaking out. VOTEC expenditures were a big increase this year. We have 40 students in VOTEC this year as compared to 21 last year, and like 12 the year before, because we're getting billed for 15 this year. It's gonna double. Workers' compensation, we have to spend more on OT and PT right now. And then your salaries, energy costs remain high. They were high last year, too, though. That's not a new thing. They're just not really going down. Efficiencies that we found, we're gonna keep supply and equipment costs low. The good news is, when we had all this money, we got all the money from the government, we replaced almost all of our equipment. So there's not a lot of big expenditures in terms of equipment that we have to do that aren't covered by this bond. So last year, to give you an idea, last year we spent $300,000 on equipment. This year, I think we spent $25,000 to $50,000 total. So that's, that's because we've replaced everything that we need to replace. There's, everything is up to date. We've got all new internet. There's gonna be a sound system in here. There's a sound system over there. Chromebooks, all of that stuff has been replaced. We got a new tractor. All our buses are one year old. So we have some expected retirements. I can't say who they are, because they haven't officially announced it yet, but my anticipation is that we will, one of the positions we won't need to replace, and the other one will be able to kind of flexibly use a teacher that we already have. We are looking to create, and I believe it is on this board agenda, right, the 811?
Yes.
Okay. So we're looking to create an 811 program. That's eight students, one teacher, one paraprofessional. Right now, we send one of them to Orange Olster BOCs, two to Orange Olster BOCs. We'll be able to bring them back. That's close to $140,000. And then potentially, if there are other school districts interested, because right now there's a waitlist to get into the Sullivan County BOCs 811 program, we could bring them in and charge tuition for that. And also, I'm told Bethany said that there are two students who may need to get sent out that are already here if we didn't have the program here, so that saves us that cost. That was actually a big savings. I've actually had Adam and Jim over at your building order new LEDs.
They install all?
They, yeah, so it was like, it's not actually terribly expensive either. So we're trying to save money that way. We, we got our bid back. We did not lock into diesel, but we locked into fuel oil at $3.32 a gallon. Not the best price in the world, but much better than last year, and easier to budget for when you know what you're gonna pay. That's what we're doing with Bethany. I showed you the interest. We're gonna try to maximize our interest, I'm hoping 200. And then maximizing our expense-based aids. I'm trying to get as much transportation and BOCs aid as we can, and that means finding anything that we can run through BOCs, which Jed has actually done a lot of work on. Anything that we're paying for here that can get run through BOCs and trigger BOCs aid, we're trying to move it over. For instance, Jed went through, actually, that was this year, all of our telephone systems to get them onto BOCs, because we have a telecommunications coaster, so like the frontier lines and stuff. We were, and before he did that, he went through and made sure that there weren't any phone lines that were just sitting out there, because we have quite a few phone lines we were paying for. So he went through, got rid of everyone we didn't need, and then put the rest on BOCs, which even with the lower aid at 44%, you know, reduces my costs. And I'm already paying the administrative fee to be part of the telecommunications coaster, so there's not really like a big bump. So that's, that's what I mean by maximizing our aids, is how we're trying to figure out anything that we can trigger aid. We're going to. To explain, since the budget workshop, how I filled the hole. So what I did was, well, one, I went up to the cap. We weren't entirely at the cap on that one. That was $50,000. I budgeted our BOCs refund at 450 instead of 375, so I went a little less conservative on that. I do think it's gonna come in right around 450. I budgeted in the expected retirements and are moving the students over, and then I took out some of the cushion that I put in, you know, and said, hey, look, Caleb, you're gonna have to live with some tighter budgeting and just keep... to have to live with some tighter budgeting and just keep control over what we're, what we're spending because, you know, you can't always have $300,000 and $400,000 cushions built into your budget. So that's how we ended up closing that gap, which was, I had $19,285 in revenue, and I had $19,900 in expenditures. I brought the expenditures down by 400 with, with those methods. So any, any questions on, on what we're doing with the budget, what we plan to do for next year? Otherwise, we're keeping our programs the same because normally I would do what we're adding, what we're not. We're planning what we've put in place is, is what we've got. Although we put quite a bit in place in the last three years.
Any questions for Caleb from the board? All good? Very good. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Oh, no, I got one more little piece on my report here. So after the budget, I talked about the tax cap. One thing I want to bring up is next year's tax cap. What's going to happen next year is there's going to be another high tax cap because the Millennium Pipeline is, this is the last year of their pilot, '23-'24, I mean, the budget I'm presenting. When they pay their last pilot payment, they go onto the tax rolls. We stop getting the pilot payment, but that gets added to our tax cap. So we're going to have our 2% plus $140,000. The good news for taxpayers is even going up to the tax cap, that $20 million going on the tax rolls, that's going to be more than that. So you might actually even see a tax decrease going up to the tax cap next year. So I wanted to mention that. And then finally, on our audit, we show a total fund balance of $3,811,473. That's up $150,000, so we put 150 in the bank for '21-'22. The unappropriated balance in the general fund is $2.8 million, up from negative 65 when we started, by the way, Scott. So we put $1,565 in the capital projects fund, which brings us down to $1,284 unappropriated. The cap is actually 780. So that's $500,000 difference. What I'm going to suggest we do, and I'll put on the next board agenda, is you put $160,000 in the ERS reserve. That number is not entirely made up. What happened once, so I went back and I said, I want, I want our school to be prepared to pay that if it happens. So I went through the last 10 years, and the biggest increase in history was when it went from 11% to 17%. So that 6% of ERS wages is about $160,000. So my point is I'm putting that in in case it ever does that again. We can just say, I've got a reserve for that. And then TRS, 160,000, I think you put in there. Now, if you do the math, that means there's, I'm still 200,000 over the cap. My suggestion is we wait until the end of this year to see what the results are, and then the rest of that we split in between EBLAR, which is Employee Benefit Leave Accrual, so it's to pay people leaving out, and then the rest in TRS also, because TRS is, is actually bigger than ERS, so I need that to be a little higher. Our workers' comp reserve is fine. We took some money out of it actually and put it into the unappropriated reserve because we had 510,000. And then also, we're self-funded. We have a $510,000 reserve account within our self-funded insurance group. So I had $1 million in workers' comp, and the biggest year ever, I had to pay out 170. So I was like, okay, that was an excessive reserve. Unemployment, we can keep where it is, but I also think it's a little excessive. We haven't paid out more than $10,000 in unemployment claims in a single year in the last 10 years. And we let go of eight people one year. We didn't pay out even that much then. So I think that's even a little high. So that would be my suggestion on that. If you guys have any questions, disagree, agree, think there's a different reserve you prefer to put it in.
Is that reserve something that we can pull from if we need to?
Yes. It's really easy to pull from. You can use it to pay your regular bill too. Right? So we have, our regular bill's 225,000 every year. If I want to take all 160 out, I could just use it to pay my regular bill. Same thing for TRS. Which is one of the reasons I like to have that in there too. EBLAR, not as much. That can only get paid out for payments, so I don't want, I wouldn't go crazy with it.
More concerned with the other two.
Yeah. Yeah, those you can pull out anytime you want. Same thing with workers' comp. Like if I wanted, my workers' comp bill's 245,000, I could, if I wanted to, take all of the money out of workers' comp and just pay the whole bill for that year, if I, you know, if I wanted to. I tend to just do big unexpected increases. So like this year, I might use a little bit of it. That's in there too. You know, where we went from 2 to 245, I might take the 45 and say, okay, I really wasn't expecting that big of an increase. I'm going to use that much. But, but if we had to, emergency situation, yes, very easy to get out of those.
Good.
All set?
Yep.
Very good. Ms. Fierro, you would like to?
Yes, I should have said this earlier. Everybody has an invitation to, we are having a retirement celebration at the Erie Trackside Manor. Congratulations, Ms. Hazen. And, you know...
Now I can name them.
Yeah, and, but I do want to say, we all are invited. So if you'd like to join us celebrating her amazing career of 34 years, then we are all invited, and, but I want to say congratulations.
Thanks so much.
34 years, 13 years ago in school, because we started together. Yes, we did. 1972. Yep. Been a long time ago. All right, two things of congratulations, and I will be there. Caleb?
Yes.
In the five years that I've sat here and came aboard, on a $200,000 house, we have raised the taxes $80, correct?
Since 2017-18, yes. Yep.
So that's where we have come to now, to the cap, but I feel that's, that's being pretty conservative, raising taxes $80 on a $200,000 house. You can do the math on other ones going forward. And I just want to make it clear that this bond has nothing to do with our budget of going to the cap, that the bond is separate. That's a separate thing. I don't want people to get misconstrued thinking, oh, we got to go to the cap because we have the bond. That's not true. Right or wrong, Caleb?
Oh, yeah, no, the bond, and the bond...
Bond is a separate entity. It's, it's by itself. It has nothing to do with our budget.
Then it won't even come into play until '25-'26. We approved it now, but it'll be...
Right. But I just want to make it clear that, that's a separate thing.
Yep.
Other than that, I have nothing. So we'll take public comment on the consent agenda only. Nothing? At this time, I would like to motion to approve consent items 4.01 through 7.03, thinking everybody had a chance to look at the agenda, correct?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Stacy?
I'll second.
Second by Amador. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any old business to come before the board? Okay. This leads us up to new business. So we've been talking about lessening the terms on the board, hoping to get more people that might want to be involved to run. So with, with discussion with this, what basically was going to happen is my seat, not as president, my seat would be five years. Everybody else's would be four. Because if we did a four-year term for everybody, at some point, two of us would come up for election in the same year. And that's not good. We can't have that. So since I'm running this year, we'll leave, because it's not on the ballot, it'll be on the ballot going forward, my seat, correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, my seat would stay at five years, and everybody else's will be four years.
The first term would have to stay at five years, so you might as well just keep it at five.
Right. Because we don't want to have two people run the same year. So at this stage, is the board, is the board on board with everything about doing this?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think we want to have more than one seat vacant in a year.
No.
Hard enough to get people to run for one seat.
Right. So at this time, being resolved that the Board of Education approves changing the Board of Education seat member terms, with the rationale of the Elgin Central School District historically has a total of five board members, which each member of, up for reelection every five years on a rotational basis, effective with the election held in 2023, and the proposition passes, one seat will remain unchanged from a five-year term. Seat number one, each election thereafter, one seat will change from a five-year term to a four-year term until all four seats have been changed to four-year terms. Seats 2, 3, 4, and 5. At each regular school election, members of the board shall be elected to fill the positions of those whose terms will expire. A term of office begins as provided by the law and continues until a successor is elected